... hereby call the board of education. The Dover Board of Education acknowledges that the law of the state establishes that members in the public, including members of the board, have the right to record public meetings using audio or video recording devices privately. The act of recording doesn't interfere with the produce of the public recording. All recordings may be used in preparation of minutes. They do not substitute for the official recording of minutes. Please be advised that the audio and visual, audio and video images will be maintained by the Secretary of the Board of Education while we post it on the district website. So I hereby call this meeting order. It's in compliance with the notice requirements of the law. Public notice was placed with the office of the Board of Education and communicated to the municipal clerk of the Daily Record and the Star Limited on August 30, 2019. Can you all please join me? Can you all please join me?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic of which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Ms. Rosales, present.
Here.
Ms. Nolan, here. Ms. Nothing, here. Ms. Phillips, here. Ms. U.S., here. Ms. Sane, in present. Ms. Block, here.
You'll notice on your agendas, the next item number four has board candidate interviews. We are going to pull off on that until eight o'clock because that was the time given to candidates. So we're going to move forward with the agenda. We have to as much as we can, and when potential candidates arrive, we will have them give their presentations at that point in time. So at this point, I would like to open the meeting to members of the public regarding agenda items only. We try to keep this to two minutes per person, so I hope that you can comply with that. And if anyone has any public comments regarding agenda items, please raise your hand, tell us your name, your address, and your comments.
Sorry, you got a year back there. Name's Anthony Rosario, 293rd Street Dover. Again, I'm very concerned citizen, I need disclaimers. Specifically to the executive session, this body has to follow the Open Public Meetings Act.
Correct.
Under the understanding. So, under the executive session, it said, "The purchase, lease, or acquisition of real property with public funds." And I didn't see an associated resolution in previous agendas detailing the specific date at which that specific portion of your executive session would be made public. Is that in existence? Did I miss that?
No, I'm going to turn this over to you. This is just, we were in executive session discussing, discussing the purchase of the property, so.
Yeah, maybe, maybe I'm misunderstanding the way it's coded, but the resolution for executive session must be made prior to the executive session, the session where the public is excluded. So I didn't see that on previous agendas, and I was curious if it was, so that I can go look back at it.
You didn't see that particular item on the, or you didn't see...
I didn't see a resolution detailing specifically a sale and/or purchase of a property whereby executive session would be entered.
What this resolution does is tell you why you're in executive session. That's the purpose of the resolution. Doesn't have to be related to something that's on the public agenda tonight.
I did not understand that comment, I'm sorry.
Ms. Dr. McLaughlin, Ms. Block, I think I may be understanding this question in a way that you are not, and Mr. Rosario can explain. I think what he is asking is, executive minutes must at some point be made public. So, when it is announced that you have an executive session and then there's a resolution, when will the minutes of that be made public? I think he's asking, when will PC see that discussion? Is that what you're asking about?
Yeah, the way it's written is the resolution must be made prior to the closed session to allow people to understand the nature of your conversation and the date which it will be made public. And I'm curious if that's this closed session, executive session resolution, or if it's a previous one to allow the public to know that you are going to be in a closed session that we're not invited to for what matter and when we can know about it. So, I'm not sure that...
Yeah, I'm not quite sure that I'm grasping your question exactly, but we do have our attorney with us tonight, and we could certainly give you a detailed response to that.
Okay.
That question, so that you have the answer that you look for.
Okay. The backup, I guess the follow-up to that is, specifically to having the closed session based on property, the statute states if it could adversely affect the public interest if the discussion of the matters were disclosed. Is that disclosable, the reason why you believe that discussing this in a closed session will be negative to the public interest?
If I may answer that question. Generally, when you're discussing any kind of contract that you may enter into, or any contract for sale of property, the reason it's discussed in closed session is because it could have an impact on the potential price, for example. So you discuss it in a closed session, so that no one is aware of the figures that you're discussing.
Okay, so the real property discussed isn't something that was previously purchased?
No.
On the end or number eight? Thank you.
Any other questions on agenda items? There being none, I will close that section of the meeting and move on to communication. And the superintendent, so Dr. McLaughlin.
Thank you. Good evening. Let me begin by announcing to the board and to our public and community that we were notified today by the New Jersey Department of Education that the Dover Public School District will receive $1,177,174 in preschool education assistance funds. And that will be the funding of our full-day preschool, the first year that we apply. We are very, very happy that the department looked favorably on our application. We're looking toward launching our whole program on October 1st with 120 full-time seats. And according to the guidance that we've given in the process, we will never have to again compete competitively for these funds, but we will be able to build in funds for the further expansion of our program. We've had quite a number of discussions with our community partners that promise even more classrooms available for next year, so that, you know, our only regret in this is that we can't accommodate our entire universe this year. 120 seats is great, but we'd love to have more than 100 seats. And next year, it is our expectation that we will come very close to that mark and not reaching it. So, I'm very happy to share that, and we were very gratified to hear that from, from the Department of Ed, and also in looking at some of the articles that already came out today in the news, very quickly. We were one of the largest recipients in the state, so I think something that the Dover School District is very proud of.
If I may just make a comment regarding that. I just want to thank the administration and everyone who worked on securing this grant. We had a very, very limited amount of time within which to apply for the grant. And the work started earlier this summer, and I know there was a massive amount of work to complete the grant, and the tight deadlines, and I believe everyone was working right up until the last minute. So I just want to, on behalf of the whole board, because they've all expressed it to me, thank the administration and those individuals who worked on the grant, because this is a really great thing for our kids to be able to have a full-day preschool, and we look forward to moving further in the future. So, thank you.
Today, we were tremendously pleased to welcome all of our students who arrived back to school, including those who attended the Dover Schools for the very first time. We had well over 200 new students this year who have registered, and our schools and facilities truly sparkled due to the efforts of our maintenance staff. Our buildings were also significantly improved due to the many infrastructure projects that occurred this summer. And our teachers have spent long hours preparing their classrooms and planning instruction that promises new learning and progress for every student that we serve. At our last Board of Education meeting, a resolution was passed purchasing the property at 19-21 Belmont Avenue. This purchase coincides in time with some dialogue relative to taxes and the challenges our constituents face as homeowners. And I would like to take this opportunity tonight to share some further details relative to the purchase and relay why the purchase is prudent for Dover, both educationally and fiscally. Educationally, every school district throughout the country is required to identify students with disabilities, and for those students, identify placements that are both appropriate to their needs and that are least restrictive. The term "least restrictive" is defined as providing a student setting to the maximum extent possible while still meeting a student's needs, an environment that does not separate students from their non-disabled peers. While there will always be students whose needs exceed a local school district's capacity to provide programming within the district itself, in Dover, we send a disproportionate amount of students to schools who have programs that we do not provide. Many of these students are sent to other public schools in our own area who provide such classes. And in the short time that we have spent in the district, it's been made clear that many of our parents would like their children with disabilities to attend Dover Schools and would like to see programs developed in our schools that would meet their children's needs. Developing an array of program options in our own district would also allow us to align curriculum, ESL support, and infuse district initiatives with our students that we are prevented from doing when a student is sent to another school which is either operated privately or from another school district. Fiscally, it's prudent to develop our own programs. In the preceding school year, our district expended $4,590,981 in tuition and a related $1,457,373 on transportation for out-of-district placements. This total of $6,48,354 represents nearly 13% of our total district budget of $47,381,814. Certainly, the district can and should provide quality programs that meet students' needs in our own district and that also decreases the expenditures that I have described. The challenges for the Dover Schools have always traditionally been one of space. Programs need quality classroom space in which to operate, and due to our large enrollment, it has been difficult to identify such space. The move of our central office to the new location frees up three large classroom spaces and a small group area at the high school. In East Dover, it frees up a large classroom that can either service a special program requiring a large space, or it can be divided into two smaller group areas. Additionally, we're hopeful that the previous modular classrooms between North Dover Elementary and the high school that are currently used by our business, facilities, registration, and transportation department can again be used as instructional areas, which would provide up to four more classroom spaces. The good news is that the purchase of our new location at Belmont Avenue comes from capital reserve funds that the board and the administration had designated for eventual space use. It's important to emphasize that the budget with this purchase has therefore not increased, no funds have been moved from our present programs, and there has been no tax increase associated with this purpose. In terms of required upgrades and renovations related to these actions, we anticipate immediate needs at Belmont Avenue to include a new roof, new windows, sidewalk work, power washing and paint, and possibly boiler repair or replacement. An approximate estimate for this amount would be in the area of $580,000. Once again, this amount is contained in capital reserve funds that were set aside for space and will not take funds away from other areas of the budget or cause any tax increase. It's also important to emphasize that although these areas are estimates based on our initial reviews of the property, provisions have been made in our purchase agreement in the event where extensive needs reveal themselves. Work in our own schools to restore classroom space will be minimal, and most likely all done in-house by our own staff. The board is keenly aware of these details and has made their previous decision knowing that for the sake of our students and the fiscal health of our district, such a move is not only prudent, but is absolutely necessary. This past week, Ms. Dalal Blue and I conducted conversations with each of our principals to work out the details of the breakfast-on-the-go program. We are tremendously pleased to launch this program with the start of our new school year for all students in grades kindergarten through eighth. And on a related note, we also held meetings last week with representatives from Hunger Free New Jersey, SNAP Ed, Zoofall, and St. John's Church. We reviewed statistics regarding Dover School population and the variety of food programs that our district is eligible to receive funding for. As a result of our meeting, there are action items that we are pursuing in partnership, and these are those items. A memorandum of understanding between the district and Zoofall Health Center. The memorandum of understanding serves to assist in the collection and the sharing of data which increases the likelihood of continued funding of our SNAP Ed program. A district commitment to summer 2020 food program participation either as a sponsor or as a food site. And third, the intent to initiate an after-school supper program for implementation in January 2020 in pilot form at Dover High School. Additionally, we are pursuing a number of possible connections between the Dover School District and Zoofall Medical to benefit our school community. The assistant superintendent and I were also pleased last week to meet with the mayor and members of his staff regarding Circle Me Dover, a new program that the town plans to provide. This program would provide recreational opportunities for individuals with disabilities and is presently in a preliminary phase. The primary request of the town is that we would publicize the program and make opportunities known to our parents. We are keenly aware that our parents are seeking such opportunities, and we have committed to this request as well as our own exploration of programs such as the restoration of Special Olympics, which our school district is sponsoring. That concludes my report.
Thank you. The number of partnerships in that statement were amazing, and so many benefits were so, so thank you for that. Ms. Block, if I may. In Dr. McLaughlin's report, he talked about breakfast after the bell and grab-and-go, I'm not sure what the correct term is. In previous meetings, we have discussed this program and barriers to this program, so I'd like to know if the district has identified those barriers and how you plan to overcome those barriers, specifically leaving students without a hot breakfast. Are students going to be able to have both grab-and-go and hot breakfast, or must they choose one? And the cleanup, the extra work that presumably we would either have to hire a janitor or that the teachers would have to pick up, how is that being addressed? Are any students being excluded if they don't qualify under certain income requirements? And I believe those are...
Yeah. We've worked with our principals, Ms. Janisch, Ms. Dalal Blue, and myself, to address the arrangements with the program. I'm going to say that in terms of the barriers, there really weren't many, that I don't think weren't pretty easily arranged among our discussions. One clarification I can provide right away is hot breakfast continues to be provided, so those students who come for hot breakfast early for school and choose to have that hot breakfast will then indicate in the classroom that they've had their breakfast. The other students, all will receive a breakfast, and the good news is that our statistics really support providing all of our students with the breakfast program, so there are no students, there won't be students in a given classroom who get a breakfast and those who don't. Everyone who wants a breakfast will be able to receive it. Before I had to clean up, I purchased some additional garbage cans. That really was the extent of what that's involved. And with distribution, schools have chosen their own methods of distributing it, but it went, and I know Ms. Janisch is going to talk a little bit about this in her report, but it went very well today. Did you bring their sample, full sample of our...
I added to part of my report.
But, and I think it went, Ms. Dalal Blue and myself, Ms. Janisch, all visited schools this morning while the distribution was happening and went very, very smoothly, even as first night. I think we expected a little more bumps than there were.
Ms. Block, if I may, a little follow-up. What extra work, how is this for the teachers who are there in their classroom? Is there anything that for them would be more challenging or, you know, or a barrier for them specifically when it comes to the children having this...
I know the principals, the different buildings, discussed with their teachers. I had some very good discussion today about the methods of how this would occur, you know, in terms of keeping track of who took the breakfast, you know, who would pick up the breakfast. Again, they were all doing that a little bit differently, and we gave them, we've given them that flexibility, but the feedback we've gotten is that it's not, it's not difficult. Yes, they don't, not the milk, but the rest of the bag. Yes, yes, the student is not going to be forced to eat.
Great news for everyone who's already said that. Thank you. It is with pure excitement that I report to the board this evening on a few items. To begin, our convocation was held on August 28th. The entire staff, including certified and non-certified staff, came together to welcome each other back. Dr. McLaughlin and I presented on our district goals, new initiatives, and our vision for Dover Public Schools. Our theme of One Dover was well-received, and I believe we are on a strong path to begin the 2019, 2020 preschool year. On day two of convocation, our staff participated in Google training for the basic elements of Google Drive, Docs, Sheets, and Slides. While some training classes had time to begin Google Classroom, not all were able to do so. As our new chief technology director comes on board in a few weeks, I'll be working closely with him to ensure that we are carefully planning and supporting our teaching staff on whichever platform they choose to use for instruction. The board has been provided tonight with the anonymous survey results from our staff for both day one and day two. We look forward to building on those areas of convocation that the staff found to be strengths, as well as utilize their ideas presented, or I'm sorry, and also utilize those ideas presented by the staff to further develop and strengthen future professional development opportunities. Tonight for board approval is a curriculum written for our kindergarten and intermediate-grade seventh and eighth ESL program. In addition, for your approval is the LEED curriculum. The LEED program replaces the DARE program, which is delivered to our fifth-grade students. LEED is a 10-week program run by trained officers from our local police department. Each officer went through a 40-hour, week-long training program in order to be able to bring this special program into our schools. After the approval tonight, I will be working with each building principal to coordinate the schedule to deliver LEED to all of our fifth-grade students. Dr. McLaughlin and I recently visited Mine Hill School District and met with Superintendent Mattel. We discussed the potential for both districts to plan shared events for our future eighth grade students, I'm sorry, future sixth grade students. The goal is to provide opportunities for students from both districts to meet and form new friendships. We are also looking, we are also looking at the idea of a shared trip towards the spring that could be a culminating event for both sixth grade classes. In addition, we discussed having ongoing articulation to ensure that Mine Hill students transition smoothly into Dover Middle School. Tomorrow, Dr. McLaughlin and I will be hosting another kindergarten orientation for our families attending the Morris County Votec preschool class. We have recently finalized the curriculum purchase and will be scheduling professional development for the preschool staff in all locations. As the year progresses, more professional development in the area of using creative curriculum with our ELL students will be scheduled as part of the professional development portion of the grant that we received. On Friday, all of our principals utilized the Honeywell system to welcome back our families. Their messages conveyed enthusiasm and energy for the start of a new school year. I applaud the principals for taking initiative and for immediately increasing our proactive communication with our families. That concludes my report.
Ms. Dalal Blue, first of all, thank you. This is my experience with Honeywell, alerts welcoming our babies back to school, so that is very great. Could you elaborate a little bit more on students moving forward? We, in a previous meeting, approved professional development training on that Apple system, and you provided Google. Can you speak a little bit more as to, you said that they were both, teachers could choose moving forward. How are we still providing that Apple training that we previously also moved the purchase of?
Is that current training, or that was training that occurred in a previous school year?
I'm unclear. No, we approved it early summer. I don't remember which meeting, it was late June or early July.
I don't think, I don't think our direction in opening the Google platform was to take one system and replace another system with it. I think that we're giving teachers options, and as I stated, once Brian, the chief technology officer, comes on board, one of the pieces he and I have worked on together is looking at what are teachers using, where can we best support them? So I think there's work to come on that, but I don't believe we're putting one before the other. We're just opening more choices.
Thank you very much.
And Ms. Janisch. Good evening, and welcome back to all the students and staff. The district projects that I've been speaking about over the summer, they've been progressing. At Academy Street, the roof project, the new roof was installed, and we are just waiting on the metal socket work to be completed later this week. Also at Academy Street, all of the interior work is complete with AC, the rooftop units. The project is waiting for the new electrical service to be installed by JCPenney. Dover High School, the media center hallway, as you can see, is complete. The only thing that we're waiting for are new doors, and they're on order currently, and they'll be installed during the second shift. East Dover, AC project, phase one of the project is complete. Fifteen interior heating and air conditioning units were installed, and fifteen exterior condensing units are also installed. And at North Dover, the new fire alarm system was installed and is up and running. And as previously discussed, students in all the elementary and middle schools receive their grab-and-go breakfast in the classroom this morning. I'm going to pass this around to our board members. They get a grab-and-go bag, which consists of cereal, another green, and juice, and then they also get milk each morning, and that would encompass all the components to a meal. The breakfast, the influence issue was very smooth, and all the students were happy. Also note that the hot breakfast option is still available for all students who arrive at school early. Every student in these schools are receiving extreme meals regardless of their status. Additional expenses being endured by the district through the enterprise fund. And I know Ms. Ruby's had asked about some additional costs. We did have to order some garbage cans. We actually did have to order some dumpsters. We had a dumpster space due to the additional breakfast. So that will actually probably cost a few thousand dollars. And that helps us with the enterprise fund as well. And we have some carts on the order announced that I think we should turn around and use some of the bags. So, those are the additional expenses, but it seems like it's going well. And the bags, we'll try to mix those up so that they don't get the same meal every day. And even though this looks like a, you know, a cereal that isn't as healthy, but it is less than a...
Because I know we did get a few comments about sending those.
So it's probably better. Actually, these all comply with the nutritional guidelines of USDA. So that's my report.
My other question. If a student can't eat the food that's in there, what's the option?
They would have to let us know. We've had in the past students that have certain diets like vegan or gluten-free. If they let us know, then we would have the cafeteria prepared option.
And Ms. Blessed, if I may. I was under the impression that the federal government would fund this, at the very least for those students who qualify and understand the school is ensuring all students receive the breakfast. Why, is the, is the enterprise funder referring to part of that federal fund? And if not, why isn't the federal funding covering the purchase of the dumpsters and garbage receptacles if they are necessary to fully service this program?
Is the, the, the federal program sponsors the meal. However, the enterprise fund that Ms. Jennings referred to before, that cafeteria fund can only be expended on cafeteria food-related items. So those again are funds that would be restricted to the feeding of students. We can use them, for example, we can use enterprise funds to replace an appliance in the cafeteria or to put in new cafeteria tables or even paint the cafeteria. But they're really, and so when, because you're not supposed, it's not supposed to make a profit on your, on your school district group service. So really through the combination of, and two of our schools, you know, have a very, very high threshold of reimbursement. One is not as high, but still high. So a great deal of this is being funded through the free, reduced lunch program, but those additional funds, you know, whether they were for the dumpsters, the garbage cans, the extra breakfast, were all easily budgeted within the enterprise fund from the cafeteria, which is what it's, what it's there for. So we're really trying to stay true to its purpose.
Ms. Blessed, I think that's the issue that we always have, that we pay too much money, even though we wanted to lower the price of lunch too, it would allow us to do that. Increase the quality of the food, but there was always extra money because it was very profitable, everybody was taking advantage.
All right, at this point in time, while we do have some motions, I believe that both candidates who are interested in the seat that was Ms. Dodd's seat when she resigned, we have an opportunity now to put a new board member in to fulfill the remainder of her term, which would be until January. And we have two interested candidates, and they are Ms., excuse me, Yudes?
Yeah.
Yudes Capano and Mr. Rich Riley. And if no one minds, I'll go in alphabetical order. And so what we're going to do, it's not going to be a question and answer kind of interview. It's just an opportunity for the candidates to come before the board and tell us what their interest is, what their background is, and any other information you think could be helpful to us in making a decision.
Hello. My name is Yudes Capano. I wanted to thank you for having me here tonight. And I'm here tonight as a companion of a demonstration to serve on the Board of Education. I have familiarized myself with the board's agenda, the committee system, and have watched several of the Dover meetings on the district website. I have been studying the New Jersey Board Association materials and resource for the New Board of Education members. If appointed and later elected to serve on the board, I plan to become a certified board member. I look forward to the privilege of serving and learning from the current board members. I am aware of the needs of our community regarding the lack of adequate funding and classizing. I also learn from the friends and neighbors about the need to expand access to preschool education and hence our special education, the programs, and support our cosmetic program and our health program. I also witness the great commitment to education among our community members and educators. I have lived in Dover for 10 years. I graduated from Dover Business College, Army College of Morris, and Pharma School. My husband, Alex, and I have two kids, Lisa and Rachel, she's seven, and my son, Aludis, are both attending the Dover School District. I have been, I, for over 10 years, I have been holding executive assistant position in, within the pharmaceutical industry, and right now in Florida Department of Pharmaceutical. I am a member of the Hispanic Latino Network Steering Committee, which provides educational networking and mentoring opportunities. The network takes pride in cultural education and awareness of the impact of diversity and inclusion. I am committed to the work of the board, ensuring that our children receive the best education possible.
Mr. Riley?
First of all, thank you very much for enlightening me. I see how hard you work, and it's still nice to see many parents here to support their children. Wonderful. My name is Rich Riley, Iowa. Born and raised in Dover. I lived in the Italian section at the time on Liberty Street. My grandmother lived next door. She taught me valuable lessons about prejudice, and she adjusted my moral compass to understand what communities were about. My only regret is I never had the opportunity to thank her. But I went on to attend Dover School Assistant, went to Academy Street School, went to the North Dover School, which, which is now an apartment complex for two years, and then I was the first graduate in classroom at East Dover Elementary. After completing high school, I went in the United States Marine Corps. And after doing that, I, I became a member of the Dover Police Department. I recruited to the Morris County Prosecutors Office. I did a number of things, being assigned to the Essex County District, because I was a cover uper. And did a lot of law enforcement things. I was very fortunate to, to work at the Prosecutors Office because it gave me a much rounded idea of what, what law enforcement is about. I, I've been with two United States Presidents as part of security. I was assigned by the Secret Service to the Vice President of the United States, who I met only a mile from here, and I had the opportunity to talk with him only because I was assigned to the men's room, and that was his first job. So I, I needed a chance to see other presidents because, you know, you have to get back to the president. It was, it was a great thing. I, I came back to Dover for a short period of time, which was a great opportunity for me because I, I did some, some interesting things. I, as an honorary member of, and the only angle to be a member of, the event aquata club, I formed a group called Carmela. And what we did was we marched down Blackwell Street with signs and we scars, and we put candles where all the dope dealers were to bring attention to the problem at the time. Myself and my group translated a number of documentaries that we, we translated into Spanish, and it was good one. I recruited back to the Prosecutors Office as chief of detectives. And as such, in 1992, the president of the International Division of Exxon was kidnapped from his home in Morris Township. As a result of that, my entire staff, all 90 detectives, were committed to that job. We went 54 days. It was just an awful thing. We had lost them in the first 48 hours, I did know that. So finally, arrest was made. As a result of that work, I was sent to the FBI Academy where I graduated from there. And after my retirement, I, I didn't take another job. I committed myself to my community. I joined the local Rotary Club. And I, I do, we do a lot of things to support, you know, without that fire, hurricane, Sandy, I was the emergency medical coordinator. So, so I, I have a deep interest in what you do, and I, I would like to have the opportunity to serve if that's available. I appreciate all your time, and thank you very much.
So it's important, at this point, you could go into executive session. If the board wanted to, there would have to be a motion to go into executive session in the fourth line discussing candidates. But if not, we can just continue.
Just continue the meeting and do that?
Yeah, you can wait until that beginning.
Okay, perfect. Thank you very much. And at this point, we are at I-7D, and I have a motion. I hope that we can follow the process. Any questions, comments?
Ms. Blessed, if I may, I have a question. I just find it. Oh, the field trip. We're informed that the field trip is to Jefferson, where students will learn important skills such as how to research, organize, analyze, evaluate, and present formal arguments, and develop public speaking skills. This sounds great. I'd like to know how many students and whether this is part of a class or if this is an extra curricular activity like debate club or how this came about?
So it is, we decided it's part of a debate club, and it is about eight to 10 students. Any other questions or comments? I know we'll call vote please. Ms. Salas?
Yes.
Ms. Mala?
Yes.
Mrs. Phillips?
Sorry, Mrs. Nutting? Yes.
Mrs. Phillips?
Yes.
Ms. Russ?
Yes.
Dr. Sander?
Yes.
And I have a motion.
Make a motion for board approval of professional development charter organization.
Correct. Any questions or comments? There's a number of votes. Ms. Salas?
Yes.
Ms. Mala?
Yes.
Mrs. Nutting?
Yes.
Mrs. Phillips?
Yes.
Ms. Russ?
Yes.
Dr. Sander?
Yes.
Personnel, Ms. Russ?
Thank you. The personnel committee has not met, as we did not have many sessions throughout the summer. I move that we, the board approve staff and extra service appointments for the 2019-2020 school year, as listed below, and as always continued upon required state and federal criminal background checks in accord with the law, and completion of required paperwork, including pre-employment verification, items one through 16.
Correct.
I have a question. I'm just not sure if I'm ever seeing a board propose a volunteer. Are we able to do that?
We can say no.
I'm just wondering from a volunteer perspective, has it, or has it covered them? Go through certain background checks of volunteers? I just haven't seen a volunteer who's listed in the plan.
Yes, yeah, we should. We should.
Volunteers?
We should be board approved. They do have a part of this.
And then, just one other question. What about the budgeting? I just wanted to make sure that we have all the personnel or still within the budget for the board, just ask your attention properly right now, just to help them out for a little bit of budgeting.
Absolutely. So the interact club is, it is a program associated with Grogrin. I'd like to keep club as we want. And so, but, and we have three people up here who are associated with Ponce and Randall. The, the great thing will be that the interact club will be associated with our own Dover Grogrin, which is very active in the community, be a service learning organization. We're very excited to have a chapter here.
I wanted to ask in regards to item number nine, with regards to translators, their training, their training, and the time that they can be practicing verbally or they'll be interpreting.
So what we are doing is piling a list of those who are able to either serve as interpreters or translators, so they'll be designated as one or the other of the vote. You're also, I've asked for our ESL, for my position wise, to arrange for training. We've been given some, some ideas of places where our interpreters and translators can go, so that there's formal training in that regard would be that number step.
Thank you, thank you. I, if you see me addressing Ms. really slightly, because I often get confused, embarrassingly, but I do get confused with a translator or interpreter, so she has to try to teach me the difference between those two. So thank you.
And Ms. Blessed, if I may, also on A9, I'm glad to learn that it's both interpreters verbal and translator, rate leaders written. I'd like to know how much the district, if we know, would have to pay if instead the district hired professional interpreters and translators instead of training our own staff? And I'm curious as to whether the staff members identified have served as interpreters and translators for our district before, and if so, whether they did so in a volunteer capacity or if they have been previously paid for this service? And what languages will these staff members interpret and translate? And finally, whether any of them will be doing simultaneous interpretation with interpretation equipment, or whether it will be consecutive, meaning the main speaker speaks and passes the mic to the interpreter?
I need, I believe that the, that this particular action is a new action. This, the reimbursement for these services will occur when staff members do this on their own time. So letters, things that we're posting, community forums, which we're hoping to have many of this year, that people come out after hours and serve as an interpreter or as a translator in terms of, you know, document types of, of work. All of the individuals here are designated for Spanish, but we certainly want to also increase this pool as we can when we have other languages available to us with that expertise. In terms of agencies, we're open to agencies. I've reached out to a couple of agencies already. They do tend to be fairly expensive, most of them charged by the word, but we'll continue to be open to that as another, as another way to supplement this, this service. So the, the actual work that these folks will be doing is not including equipment at this time. However, if we become aware of equipment that, that we could utilize and be trained with, then we would, we will.
I believe you have some, if I may, if you may, sorry, I believe you have some.
Yes, the equipment we have and, and that I know that we've utilized in the past, we're also doing some, some engage with our community about what their reaction is to using that equipment. So, yes, yes.
I have a few other questions if I may, Ms. Blessed. On A10, are we approving these substitute teachers to be, like, on a list of substitute teachers? Or are they being hired in some type of contingency basis, like on-call basis? And are we working with an agency or with substitute teachers directly, or both? And what plan, if any, do we have to address the challenges of ensuring adequate coverage for staff, staff absences and leaves moving forward?
These substitute teachers are being approved to add on to our substitute list. They're not for specific positions, they're for per diem substitute opportunities. We're actively recruiting. We're actively recruiting to increase our substitute pool, which right now is fairly small. The other areas that we're working on to increase substitute coverage, we've, I think the board previously approved an agreement with Swing, which is a supplemental substitute agency. So in the event that we cannot fill vacancies with our own substitutes, that agency can provide us with approved substitutes who would work with an additional agency fee that would be a substitute. We would certainly try to fill that with our own substitutes, but that would be another way that we could fill vacancies. And then the other item that I'll mention is that we are, in January, we are implementing the frontline substitute system, which was formerly known as A S O P, which our district has utilized a caller, a physical caller over the years. This will be an automated services that approximately 80% of the districts in New Jersey use. We endeavor that it will increase our staff pool of substitutes and will make substitute management more efficient, which again will increase the chances of us recruiting a substitute. I also want to mention that we did make an administrative decision to allow for half-day absences. So previously, staff were prohibited from taking a half-day absence, they had to take a whole day absence. So if a staff member had an A M. medical appointment but could be here in the P M., they had to take a whole day for that. So now, they will be allowed to take an A M. or a P M. absence, which means that we know that we'll have a regular certified member of our staff here for half a day that we wouldn't have had otherwise. It may also help us with substitutes who may only want to work a half a day. So for example, if you're a paraprofessional in the district and you work in the morning and you don't work in the afternoon, you can be a substitute in the afternoon. So having half-day vacancies helps us on both sides. So, and we are, there will be a, at our next board meeting later this month, we are putting together, Mr. Bullock is putting together a proposed list of new substitute rates, making us somewhat more competitive with districts around us and also introducing two new rates, one for, for paraprofessionals because traditionally the district does not prefer paraprofessional substitutes, but it absolutely has to in terms of meeting mandates. And the second item is to establish for first time a new substitute rate. We have not, oh, we have that here. Oh, they're here. They're on this agenda. Okay, I'll order to the next agenda. Thank you. So these rates are all here in order to bolster our, are going to, to fill our classes more efficiently.
And Ms. Plessus, Dr. Plessus mentioned paraprofessionals in his explanation to the substitute teacher question. I do have some questions about paraprofessionals. If you might briefly explain the role of a paraprofessional, what is a paraprofessional? And those on items A and 11, will we need more paraprofessionals or will these hires leave us fully staffed in terms of paraprofessionals? And why are these positions part-time instead of full-time?
We are getting close to filling our paraprofessional needs. Not all of those needs need to be filled. I think we met today with one of our supervisors who identified two or three additional spots that we have to fill. I'll give the board an exact number on that, but I know that those interviews are happening now as we speak, so I expect those positions will be filled shortly. We do have the majority of our paraprofessionals part-time and I know that that was done, as many districts have done, because full-time, full-time paraprofessionals collect full benefits. And so, the benefit package often is more expensive actually than the salary for a paraprofessional, making it challenging for districts. That doesn't mean, we have not decided this is a district that will not hire full-time paraprofessionals, so we do have that option to continue to look at each situation on its own merits. As far as what a paraprofessional is, they're not typically, they're a non-certified service provider. Now, they may have a certification, but we are not utilizing them. So many times you might have a beginning teacher, for example, who gains their experience by first being a paraprofessional. They work in assistance to either a student individually or to a class. And always, the idea of a paraprofessional is that they are supporting instruction. They're, they're not plowable in nature, but they are supporting instruction or supporting a student directly. And we, we will, I, we are not projecting that there will be an increase in paraprofessionals unless there's a specific need that, that arises. And I'll certainly alert the board that, that trend seems to occur.
Any other questions? If you'd like to have a roll call vote. Ms. Salas?
Yes.
Mr. Miller?
Yes.
Ms. Muller?
Yes.
Mrs. Nutting?
Yes.
Mrs. Phillips?
Yes.
Ms. Ruiz?
Yes.
Dr. Sander?
Yes.
Ms. Plessis?
Yes.
Any other questions, please? Um, so, we did have a meeting scheduled for next Tuesday, September, but the administration needs to reschedule that, so we are in the process of figuring out what the meeting is. Curriculum, curriculum, Ms. Muller?
Yes.
Could we recommend the approval of following curriculum guides? It's A S L department and the E S L said they made some slight corrections and a couple of the grade levels on that curriculum. And the other one is the law enforcement against works program. It's Dr. Lewis. I think we did that. Second.
Ms. Plessus, we have a question. Um, Ms. Stella, I have a few questions about the E L L kindergarten curriculum. Is this a new or updated, new curriculum or updated curriculum? And do we have a separate E L L kindergarten classroom or is this curriculum a new sport students integrated into a multi-level mainstream kindergarten?
My understanding is this is a revision of an existing curriculum and this curriculum is not the kindergarten class curriculum, this is just for the E S L. So those students, I believe, are going to be allowed some push in.
Thank you. We have a second. We have roll call vote please. Ms. Salas?
C.
Mr. Miller?
Yes.
Ms. Muller?
Yes.
Mrs. Nutting?
Yes.
Mrs. Phillips?
Yes.
Ms. Ruiz?
Yes.
Dr. Sander?
Yes.
Ms. Plessis?
Yes.
Community relations, Mr. Miller?
We have a meeting scheduled on September ninth. It was approached by the Hall of Fame Committee to the Open Stock Society. They're going to have a ceremony and so I was recruited to put the book together. I have to get a lot of information from you. So, I was all really, so, but this should be a nice event honoring some old projects and stuff. So.
And putting that book together was going to be, you've got big shoes to fill. I've seen that.
I bet you have any of the digital work of what you've done before.
Because it is quite, it's quite a, I mean, it's really wonderful. You'll see it after the next event.
Pictures and text and they just have to come up with a new cover. This was the cover of the last one.
Okay. In 2014.
2014.
That's wonderful. Thank you very much. Policy, Ms. Salas? Good evening all. So policy committee has not met. We do not have any meeting and policies today. We do have a meeting scheduled for Monday or November. Building some grounds, Ms. Plessus.
So for building some grounds, we haven't met in a long while because it's been the summer. But as far as the damage to the district, damage to school properties, we have none, which is great. And everybody likes to have a motion on the board to approve the decision of the 2013, 2018 by testing statement.
We have a motion in the second. Any questions or comments? There are being numbered, please have a roll call vote. Ms. Salas?
Yes.
Mr. Miller?
Yes.
Ms. Muller?
Yes.
Mrs. Nutting?
Yes.
Mrs. Phillips?
Yes.
Ms. Ruiz?
Yes.
And budget finance, Dr. S.
The budget finance, buildings and grounds super committee has not met, so we will be in the E S L. I would move that board approved, the board approves and or adopts the following resolutions, A, one, three, five. Paying particular attention to the generous donation to another district scholarship.
Second.
I have a question, Ms. Plessus, on number five. I didn't quite understand what the level is.
So the, if you might, any other questions? This consultant will be meeting with stakeholders throughout our student community, which include parents, students, teachers. Has already begun an analysis of our data, which is inclusive of, but not limited to test scores, student retention, absenteeism, all those elements that indicate progress and success for students, all will make up our E L L population for the herd broadlands. Not just students who qualify for bilingual or E S L services, students who have exited the program, students who might have missed the cutoff. All of those issues will be examined and will, this consultant will be with our bilingual education committee, will also present to the board and provide us with guidance. Dr. Field, and I think we're very fortunate to, to have her, as someone who can come in. She's been a primary consultant for the state of New Jersey, but nationwide as well. So I think that you'll find her insights to be intriguing ones and ones that will help us form an action plan for the future of bilingual education.
It puts in action.
Yes. They, that, it is a base one, there is a base two.
Any other? There are no further questions or comments? I have a roll call vote please. Ms. Salas?
Yes.
Mr. Miller?
Yes.
Ms. Muller?
Yes.
Mrs. Nutting?
Yes.
Mrs. Phillips?
Yes.
Ms. Ruiz?
Yes.
Dr. Sander?
Yes.
Ms. Plessis?
Yes.
Do you now have old business? Any old business?
Ms. Plessus, if I may, not that we need to discuss it today, I just want to flag for us that we committed to a special meeting for goals, missions, and goals, mission and vision. And unless I missed something that has not yet been scheduled, so we do need to confirm that with Ms. Peterson.
It's the next meeting.
Okay, so we are, it is confirmed for the seventeenth. Okay, and Ms. Peterson will join us in regular session to lead that discussion.
Yes, thank you. Any other old business? In business, we just have the information there regarding the regular meeting and do want to point out that our regular meetings will be starting earlier. So those of you who are used to an A and P start time, we will be having a seven thirty start time. Another thing that I just wanted to say before I open to the public, to our two candidates who are interested in filling the position, I want to thank you both very much for your interest. I think the, the school district is doing some wonderful things and it's great to see community members who live to their legs and a half and want to be part of that. So I want to thank you both very much. We appreciate it. It's the last one, right? I'm sorry. And I believe what will occur after the meeting tonight, we will go into executive session for, for a bit. And at that point, after the executive session is over, we will come out and announce the...
You'll have to be able to in public. You don't have to have an executive meeting.
Right, because Plessus, I don't know that any of us have called for an executive session. Do, do any of us feel we need an executive session? I definitely don't.
Yes, but, but I think the, the order of when you do this is up to the board. But what the appropriate thing to do would be for somebody to make a motion to go into a meeting session.
Right.
And if the motion passes, you'll let it go into executive session. But ultimately, the decision has to be able in public. And then my, my understanding, because of the schedule of the calendar, I think it has to be done tonight.
Yes.
So I think, so I want to let the public and the board and the candidates know that one way or another, there will be a decision, you know, tonight.
Sorry, Ms. Plessus, that's actually my, my new business announcement. We could kind of explain what are the next steps.
Okay, and, and so, so the situation is that we have to make a decision within 65 days of the resignation of a board member. The Board of Education has to make a decision as to the candidate they chose or if there's only one candidate or whatever. They need to make that decision within 65 days. We're there. And so we're going to have to make a decision this evening regarding this. We would like to, and as we discussed in the last public meeting, I know I was scared of just on conference call, but as we discussed in the last meeting, what we'd like to do is have the individuals present in public so that the public would also have an opportunity to hear the candidates and that the board will then go into executive session to discuss the candidates and their qualifications and then come back out into a public session to take form of vote.
So two things, I, I wanted to ask, the new business switching a little bit.
Okay.
To ask, do we need to make a motion to take and vote?
Done, don't you?
So when we're done with public comment, maybe Ms. Muller will move for executive session, second, and, and hopefully we can ensure that the motion includes a time limit for 15 minutes or whatever, so the public knows how long they may expect us to return and vote publicly, which is what we then will have next. So I just want to make business, I want to give a huge shout-out to the girls' soccer and football volunteer that we approved today. I'm very happy to hear their commitment to go to Athens. I was a soccer, a girl soccer athlete, so it's great to know that they will have a volunteer to support them. I know the coaches need a lot of help as well with the, you know, get round. So it's great to see those athletes coming out of the volunteer. I hope you see more for football, for soccer, for the others, please. Thank you.
Right, at this point in the meeting, there is another opportunity for public comment and at this point in time, you can express yourself regarding any specific issues. Please state your name and call out, state your name, your address and limit your comments to three minutes. And this can be about anything, not just agenda items. I saw a hand raised here. Yes.
Hello, good evening, sorry, good evening, everyone. First time here, actually, excited to be here, learning from you guys. My name is Jaime Panos and I'm resident of Dover for 17 years, house owner, and now we are business owner too in town. The reason that I'm here today is because I have a, my son is four years old and we heard about the program, the pre-K program. It's very nice, it's good. But the reason, my wife, she applied for the pre-K since April, I mean, she tried to, to apply, but nobody was able to help her because trying to find the appointment with Mr. Spielman, I don't know if I'm spelling right, he was going to retire and was, was able to receive the application at the moment in April. So finally, three weeks ago, someone, someone received the application, but unfortunately for us, and we feel kind of upset because we've been Dover residents for 17 years, they tell us it's not a space for a son in the pre-K program. And it's, we always be able to help the community. For example, we've been doing the Academy Hours in Academy Street for, I'm not sure, three or four years in the road. We do the photography business and we always, we always willing to help the kids and we like to do if we are able to help them. We do that, we did like the Christmas party with, I'm not sure if it's Head Start in Casa Puerto Rico. We always like to... We always like to help the community, if we able to do it. Our business, as a owner of the business, we always like to help people if we able to do it. So the reason that I'm here is, we kind of said, not with, with people, just we kind of said with the situation that we don't have the equal opportunity for our son to join the pre-K program.
You have a little less than a minute ago.
Yeah, 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 I'm done. I just like to, I just.
I didn't want to cut you off.
I just want to ask people in the table, so I can, hopefully I can have an answer and help from you, so my son can be able to join the program.
Thank you.
Thank you, that's live, Facebook live, I love it, so a lot of people is going to see and share the, the video. Thank you so much.
Yes?
Hi. Hi there, Cheryl Coligan, I'm a French teacher at the middle school, I'm actually in my 24th year here in this district, so I've been around a bit. I wanted to personally say, and I'm speaking on myself, behalf of myself, that I was very impressed with the reception that we received this year, and it is first time in many, many years that I can honestly feel, and I can honestly say, that I felt respected and valued. I want to thank Dr. McLaughlin for being there at the reception, as well as Ms. Dala Palu, not only at the reception, at the breakfast, which was lovely, but when we entered the auditorium, you shook our hand and you introduced yourselves with your first names. I appreciated that. You greeted us at the meeting, you opened the meeting for us and gave us an update, and I also want to thank Ms. Grisales for taking time out of her personal schedule. It's important to me that a Board of Education member was present at our opening convocation, as you called it. Again, I saw you this morning, Dr. McLaughlin, at our first day with our students, and I, I just think it's terrific. I'm cautiously optimistic, perhaps because I'm one of the older teachers, I'm cautiously optimistic that we can move forward in this team building process. I, I think it can happen. I applaud the board for making many decisions that I know are very difficult to make. I hope we all benefit together. Ultimately, those advantages are for our children, for our students, and that is our greatest priority. Thank you.
Any other comments? Wait, there was a lady in the front.
Okay. I would even get one's a ladies. My name is Maria Borda, and I live in 175 South Morris Street. I have two kids right now in the school district, and I have a concern. We guys, we, we lost the, the trainer, the driving trainer, because the guy retired, right? So we have only half a part of the program, they, we used to have a full program, there was the test, the riding test, and they had the behind-the-wheel test, and now our kids have only the riding test, and we lost the second part, which is the more important part. I think if it's possible, you guys can work out and find a certified trainer to continue that program. First of all, because it's better for a professional to train those kids. Second, a lot of parents doesn't have the time, the patience, or the vehicle to give this behind the wheel. Yes, we completed six hours mandatory by the DMV, but it's too harsh to teach your own kid, because you get nerves and you have a lot of things in mind, and pay to schools is not really worth it, because they had double, double accelerator, double brakes, so their kids really don't learn the proper way. And second, when you find a particular trainer, it's a lot of money we have to pay. So if you consider to find somebody, maybe my kids don't going to be in that part, but someone else can have that choice.
Okay.
And a second thing.
About one minute ago.
Okay, so then I come back for the next one. I have a couple pieces to, to do. Thank you. That's okay, don't worry.
Thank you. If there was another, we'd do that.
And here was area 29, Third Street, again, concerned with some things that I was reading. So, I want to go back and just thank the, the administration and the board back the last time I was here. We now have the user-friendly budget posted right on the front of the website, because it was easy to click on. The second part would be the, just to piggyback off the previous comment, if we're allowing volunteers, which as Mr. Miller had mentioned, I had not known that volunteers were allowed to supplement the standard staff, maybe the district can reach out to some of the other public servants that might be willing to assist with the driver education program and just supplement the training and education component, so that those public servants can easily be a net neutral benefit for your budget. Third, the, the capital reserve item, I believe three years ago, we were at 7.5 million, and currently we're at four, with your purchase, you're at probably two and a half. Is there a long-term plan, or when will a long-term plan be discussed, on how you will increase the capital reserve back to a safe level, or is, if that level is currently safe? And minimize the impact on taxpayers, because the, I think it's 3% increase of your budget has caused over $300 annually, $300 to $400 annually, on the average taxpayer, which is significant in this state. And fourth, and this one, now that the attorney is present, I will just read this time, so that I am not subject to interpretation, and I would like to know specifically to today's executive session, not towards any others, when NJSA 10:4-14, I'm sorry, sorry, 4-13 was explicitly followed, "No public body shall exclude the public from any meeting to discuss any matter described in the above until the public body shall first adopt a resolution at a meeting to which the public shall be admitted stating the general nature of the subject to be discussed and stating as precisely as possible the time and the circumstances under the discussion conducted in closed session of the public body can be disclosed to the public." Did that occur for this evening's first executive session?
If you have a little less than a minute ago.
That was it. I'm not going to answer. I had a little more.
I thought I was asking again, you still had time.
That was a question to the, to the board.
I understand, we, the board has taken comments from another people, number of people, typically the board will answer at the end of public comment if there's any.
Oh, okay.
It's a time for public comment.
Right.
So I think you have about 48 seconds left, if you'd like to do, if you have some additional public.
I figured you could answer for eight seconds, but okay.
Well, at the end, you want to give us a nice.
No, I'm sorry, I, I thought you said you had something more.
No, that was a question, last one was a question.
I, I thought several questions, actually.
Yeah, I guess.
At the end of public.
I know.
I actually wasn't here at the beginning of the executive session this evening, but typically the board will pass a resolution to go into executive session before it goes into executive session.
So that occurs.
And that resolution typically state, state the purposes or the reasons for the executive session.
At what time did that occur tonight?
I think that, I, I believe the executive session started at 6:45, so that's when it was advertised, so I believe it was at 6:45.
So at, at 6:45, I could have been here to hear the resolution?
Right.
Yeah. And although actually, I think the board, the meeting opened in public, probably in the other room, so you wouldn't have necessarily heard it in here, but yes, at 6:45, there would be a public.
There's, there's the same statement, the, the doors open, the same statement that I read tonight to start the meeting, essentially starts your executive session, and then we are provided with a list of things, because sometimes it's only one thing, you may just be discussing.
Okay, but to, maybe this is part of my, a little 30 seconds that's left, that the way that NJSA 10:4-13 is written, specifically the resolution must address what you're going to discuss, that timeframe, if that did occur tonight, at what time did it occur?
At 6:45.
At 6:45.
That's correct.
So the advertised time to start is 6:45, not 7:30.
See, advertised time, but I believe what it says is that the executive session will begin at 6:45, but the board opens the meeting in public. The meeting has to be in public, and a resolution has to be passed to go into executive session.
It's just slightly confusing, and I'm pretty adept at reading, you know, times. So, if at 6:45, the meeting starts, and then you're going to leave for half an hour, I don't mind, but.
That's exactly what it is.
The start time is at 7:30.
I, I believe, and I didn't see the specific advertisement, but the way the board meetings typically are advertised in this scenario, is that the meeting is advertised to start at 6:45, and that the board will go into executive session at that time. At that time, the board will pass a resolution indicating that it's going into executive session, and the reasons that it's going into executive session. Then the meeting is then closed at that point, because you're into executive session. And then the public portion of the meeting, out of executive session, is to start at 7:30. And the reason that, that's done, and it's a convenience, it allows surprise that a couple of court decisions that happened 10 or 15 years ago. Sometimes boards used to come, let's say the meeting was scheduled to start at 7:30 this evening, the board would come at 7:30, everyone would be here, and the board would then pass a resolution, all right, we're going to go into executive session to discuss X, Y, and Z, and everyone would leave, the public would be sitting here, and we would be in executive session for 45 minutes or an hour while everyone's sitting here. So the, what the, what some boards have chosen to do is to schedule the meeting to have the executive session first, and then go into the regular session, that way the public knows that we, you know, nothing will be happening for the public to see between 6:45 and 7:30. However, as you indicated, it is required that prior to going into executive session, that there be a motion, and the motion has to be passed by the board to go into executive session, and that motion has to state the reasons that board is going into the executive session, and the topics that they're going to discuss, so.
And when we can find out about it.
Yeah, there's, typically it's a standard statement that says something like, it'll be.
When the reason for confidentiality is no longer.
Right, so your standard statement doesn't provide a reasonable time, like you could say, when the matter's resolved, it says at, at a future meeting.
At a future meeting, especially when we have two or three or more items under executive session, the time for the confidentiality for that particular issue may differ on each one.
It depends on how.
We really can't say at such and such a time we'll let you know, because for example, if it's, if it's ongoing litigation, we may not have any idea when that's going to end. So we can't give you a kind of a, a date until and unless we know.
Sure.
My concern as a citizen is, you have a law to follow, and you're following it very closely, but the citizen doesn't have the opportunity, unless they go every single meeting, to know when, when you will tell us about this item. So, I could read about it at the one meeting that I missed, if I read the agenda, and then I could miss it if I'm not paying attention closely. So, if you're having, that's the intent of the law, so that I know you're going into executive session today, and in two weeks or in a month, at least after this date, I can find out about what you were discussing, legally defining the authority of the citizenry to evaluate what you've done.
I, I, I think that typically might, you know, I haven't researched that last particular question in, in a long time, but I think typically, what the board will say is that this will be cut, will be made public at such time as the need for confidentiality no longer exists.
Okay.
It really isn't practical or possible, as, as Ms. Plessis was indicating, I don't think in advance, particularly in advance, the board passes a resolution to go into executive session, and they haven't had any discussion in executive session yet. So I don't think it's really practical or possible for them to say, these items will be made pop, public in two weeks, or 30 days, or a year, or 60 days. So typically, the language I see, and I'm not aware of anything that would preclude this, is that the matter, you know, become public at such time as the need for confidentiality no longer exists. It's sort of like a blanket thing, I appreciate it. But certainly, anyone is welcome to be here at 6:45 to hear the resolution for going into executive session. At some point, the board prepares minutes of the executive sessions, and that, those are, those are posted at some point. Now, some items may need to be redacted if there's still a need for confidentiality, and they may not be very detailed.
And actually, that was the other thing I was going to say, you can always check under the, under the minutes of the meetings, because after the reason for confidentiality no longer exists, then our Board of Education gets the minutes of the meeting, looks at it, ensures that it's accurate, and then those minutes would be posted. So you don't have to come to every single meeting to find out what happened, when the reason for confidentiality no longer exists, the, the.
Well, I'm sorry to cut you off, ma'am, with respect, you probably had an executive session to purchase $1.4 million of property, and then it was a single line item on a resolution that was passed, and people probably didn't find out about it until half the time. That's how I found out.
If you look at the Oakland Public Meetings Act, you referenced it before, you'll see that of the nine, you know, the nine categories of states that are permitted to be discussed in the executive session, one of those in particular is.
The transact can reveal property.
Property, so that would.
Only when negatively affecting the public interest, which was my initial question when you were absent, if that fact is detailed after the fact, and the public disagrees with a member, they may choose to come out and speak about it. So if your reason for keeping it closed, that you wanted to transact a transaction for real property, the reason why it would cause a negative impact in the public interest is in dispute by the public, we would like to come out and talk about it.
Well, so, but they, they, I, keep in mind, only the discussion can take place in, in, in executive session. The act, the item itself, has to be done in public.
Right, so I was out in August, and you passed the resolution that I found out about when I got back, and now I couldn't have discussed it.
Right, I, I assume, yeah, I assume that item was on the agenda for that evening.
It was.
Yeah, so I mean, you know, obviously, if you need to, if you want to know what's going to be on a particular agenda, you would have to review the agenda.
Okay.
Thank you. If I may, Ms. Plessis, wanted to add that while we were discussing an executive session, everything that was discussed was reported in Dr. McLaughlin's superintendent report today, and the Hope House was not keeping it in any executive session, so a lot of members of our community did know that we were purchasing this building through the Hope House making that public, through us posting it on the agenda, and our agenda's posted, is it posted Friday, Ms. Johnish, before our Tuesday meeting? Monday before our Tuesday meeting.
Right.
So certainly may not be enough time for folks in summer months to have advance notice, and, and maybe that's something that we can consider underneath, this has had another time, how to ensure that the public is well aware, well in advance of, of significant purchases, because I certainly hear stories that are concerned.
Any other comments?
Yes. Thank you, my name is Maria Chagón, I live on 82A East Blackhole Street. I just had a couple of comments for the, when they were in search for the new superintendent, we had a couple of sessions, and they asked the public, what would you like to see in the future, and one of them was to use Honeywell like the other school systems do, not just in emergencies, but sports, or meetings, or welcome. So today, I think it was today, I think, yeah, it was this morning, I woke up to read an email from my daughter's principal saying, good morning, welcome back to school, and then I received another email about some other change, so I was thrilled to know that you guys took our ideas into consideration, so thank you for that. Also breakfast, I was happy about that as well. A, a, a real quick story, my other daughter bought my kid, my little one, breakfast, some cereal, and this morning she didn't like it, so she left it on the table. She went into class and she asked for that, that little bag, you know, because she was like, Mom, I didn't really have breakfast, so I ate it, and she brought a snack home. So I'm happy for that, thank you so much for taking care of our kids. And I also wanted to talk to you a little bit about Dover Sports. Dover Sports is limited in our sport options. We only have four compared to the surrounding schools. For the little thing that I looked around, I was thinking maybe if you would consider adding more sports to, to something like swimming, or tennis, or, I know this is very odd for this area, maybe hockey? Because I grew up in Newark Ironbound, and hockey was like the best thing, the guys used to go play, or even girls go play, and even this would probably be more out of the box, but fencing too. out of the box, but fencing too, uh, fighting fencing club. Um, so think about that for the future. And, um, I also came here in support of my colleague, El Des Catano. I work with her and she's so, I'm also on the same committee with her for Hispanic-Latino Network. This was the first year that we worked with Academy Street School in bringing in a science mentorship for our fifth graders. So she's very passionate in what she does, and I was thrilled to know that she was gonna take a decision. I am done, thank you very much.
Okay.
Thank you. I thank you all.
Thank you, ma'am.
So, I'm sorry.
I'm Richard Dixon, and I live in 19 Greenwood Avenue in Dover. I moved in 25 years ago. I have first to say I'm very proud of the Board of Education members for making a change, for trying to move into the 21st century and hearing what has, has happened over this meeting, Dr. McLaughlin and Ms. Vella Palu. I'm hearing positives. Thank you so much for seeing that this district needed a change. Uh, I have to say that when I came to Dover in 1985 as a young man, I spent 33 years here as a teacher. I'm one of the rare people that taught in every school. I taught every grade level from four-year-olds to 20-year-olds. I was an art teacher. I taught 9,000 students. I remember I had two building principals that each one of them taught 150 students in their career, then went on to be administrators. So I have to say, not humbly, that I'm an expert on Dover Public Schools because I've seen it all. And I will say that there's only, I know there's one person here, uh, sitting near me, where we were here in 1989, it's the 30th anniversary, when a, the Dover Board of Ed hired a person who came on board in charge of Dover Schools. That person started a trend, a downward spiral that was negativity. Uh, it was intimidation and, uh, mind games, and the people who worked in town, the, or the district, the maintenance people, the custodians, the, uh, staff members, the teachers, we all tried to stay positive. We worked our tails off, and I think we did a good job. The students stayed positive, but we had this training of administrators, many of them, that ended up training this way to, uh, browbeat their staffs, and it came down to the students. I am hearing such positive things in this meeting. I waited a year, I retired a year ago, and I wanted to come back.
A minute to go, sorry.
I wanted to come back, and I couldn't bring myself to. But now that there's a change, I just want to say I'm with you 100% and thank you so much for making the Dover Schools move forward. We appreciate it. Thank you, gentlemen.
John Caniglio, 24 Taylor Town Road, and, um, president of the Dover Education Association. First, Richard, thank you very much for your comments. Um, and, um, secondly, earlier in the meeting, it was brought up about the, uh, breakfast after the bell, the grab and go, and there were a couple of questions about, um, how the teachers are being, um, you know, what the reception is amongst the teachers and, um, you know, we all went through this today. And anytime you do something for the first time, you're gonna have an adjustment period, things are gonna have to be changed or altered or whatever. Um, but I'm really pleased and happy to say that everything went very, very smoothly today. The, um, the food was brought to our classroom. It did not interrupt the, the, uh, the instruction whatsoever. We went right along with our day. They went up and got their food. They came back to their desk and they worked as they ate. Um, the food was thrown out in a separate garbage bag, which was then taken away, so it wasn't sitting in the room all day. So, um, I just want to reassure the board and the parents that are here today that it is a fabulous, fabulous, fabulous thing. And, um, you know, we are full, 100% in support of this program, and it's a great thing that we have this, and, um, we're looking forward to it for the rest of the year. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? I want to thank all of you community members who came out. It's wonderful to see so many faces out there. I just want to make sure I give a motion. Session before you excuse everyone. I'm not excusing everyone, I'm just, I'm not gonna excuse them yet, just don't want them to. It's okay. Just, uh, it's really wonderful to see people at the Board of Education. Um, it's important, and it's important that you go out and tell your friends that these are the things that are happening. Um, this is a board I believe that collectively, um, wants to do things so that you're aware of what we're doing and have input with regard to what we're doing. And, um, also, we all have this, we share a common goal, and the common goal really is our children collectively, our children, and our staff, yes, and, and our community members, the entire group. But I think that this board has done a wonderful job of, I was doing things that are, that are making a lot of different things happen. And I do have to, again, give kudos to our, our new administrative staff who, I just have to say, the Herculean effort that it took to do all of the things that have been done this summer behind the scenes is absolutely stunning, and it's happening. And so I just encourage your friends to come to see what we all do because our hearts are in it and it really is encouraging to see all of you out there. So thank you. That's all I was going to say. So I want to make a motion to go into executive session for up to 20 minutes.
And the purpose would be to discuss the candidates for the board decision?
Yes, thank you.
I hate discussion on that. I won't.
If I may, Ms. Palesis, just to clarify, no public action will be taken at this meeting and we will return for a public vote immediately after the, the executive session.
No, actually, public action.
Public action.
Public action will be taken after the executive session.
That's what I mean, not in executive.
Right, exactly, no, right. With the executive tenure, private public action can never be taken as executive.
Considering the, um, the commitment and, and the fact that we had two individuals that were willing to put their time in, we cannot thank you enough. It's very important. We hope that, that civic interest, that particularly more than interest, um, continues. Um, we have made a decision.
Well, no, no, we're gonna have, we, we had a discussion, we're gonna need to have a motion.
So, um...
So if someone would like to make a motion to nominate, um, to, a motion to appoint one of the candidates.
I'm making a motion to appoint El Des Catano as our candidate.
Okay. Is there a, is there a second?
Our appointing committee thing.
Is there a second to that motion?
Second.
Okay. So now, you have a roll call vote. The way that the policy reads, you do a roll call vote on each candidate as they're nominated. So, and now this, this candidate had been nominated and there's a motion pending, so now you have a roll call vote.
Roll call vote.
Now the discussion took place really well.
I think you can.
Yeah.
Apparently we can't. I wasn't gonna say anything. I don't need the, but thanks, Mr. Miller.
We have a roll call.
You don't have to apologize. It's okay, just please.
We have a roll call vote.
Ms. Rosales?
Yes.
Mr. Miller?
No.
Ms. Mullin?
No.
Mrs. Nunn?
Down.
Mrs. Phillips?
No.
Ms. Ruiz?
Yes.
Dr. Zainer?
Yes.
And Ms. Palesis?
No. No, I have not a motion.
I make a motion for your drive.
Do I have a second?
Second.
We have a roll call vote.
Ms. Rosales?
No.
Mr. Miller?
Yes.
Mrs. Mullin?
Yes.
Mrs. Nunn?
Yes.
Uh, Mrs. Phillips?
Yes.
Ms. Ruiz?
No.
Dr. Zainer?
No.
And Ms. Palesis?
Yes.
The, um, successful candidate is Mr. Riley. We would like to congratulate you and, and El Des.
Good luck.
Thank you very much. Best of luck, excuse me, in the future. And at this point in time, um, with time being a critical factor, we would like to, with your permission, swear you in.
I have, I have to write it down, so. And then come over by, I was like, would you like to keep the seat in front or is that, no, I'll go. So I'm just gonna have you repeat after me?
Of course.
Okay. So I, state your name.
I, Richard Riley.
Do solemnly swear...
Do solemnly swear.
Or affirm that I will support the Constitution of the United States...
I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of New Jersey.
The Constitution of the State of New Jersey.
And that I will bear true faith and allegiance to the same...
I will bear true faith and allegiance to the same.
And to the governments established in the United States and this state under the authority of the people.
And of the government, you're gonna...
And allegiance to the same, and to the governments established in the United States...
And the allegiance to the state and the governments established in the United States.
And this state under the authority of the people.
And in this state under the authority of the people.
So help me God.
So help me God.
I, and state your name.
I, Richard Riley.
Do solemnly swear...
Do solemnly swear.
That I possess the qualifications prescribed by law...
Possess the qualifications prescribed by law.
For the office of member of the Board of Education.
For the office of member of the Board of Education.
And that I am not disqualified as a voter...
And not disqualified as a voter.
Pursuant to NJSA...
Pursuant to NJSA... 4-1.
Nor disqualified due to a conviction...
Nor disqualified due to conviction.
Of a crime or offense...
Of a crime or offense.
Listed in NJSA...
Listed in NJSA...
18A...
18A.
:12-1...
:12-1.
And that I will faithfully, impartially, and justly...
And will faithfully, partially, and unjustly, unjustly.
And partially unjustly. Perform all the duties of that office.
This might be the hardest part. Perform all the duties of that office.
According to the best of my abilities, so help me God.
According to the best of my abilities, so help me God.
Okay, congratulations.
Thank you for coming along. Thank you.
Thank you.
Any more to close me?
Second, second.[1797.23]